Which I believe is G. Is that correct? We're on G.
E.
D. I'm sorry, wrong page. We're not that far ahead. D. All right. It's been moved and seconded that we defer two weeks. And I'm just checking, I'm thinking we, and we will be meeting in two weeks. That would be the first. We will not be meeting in two weeks. It'll have to be three weeks to be the first. We would be the first week, first Tuesday in March. Okay, and then there was a second for that. Mrs. Everhart, seconds. Discussion, Mrs. Schwartz.
Mr. Mayor, what will be the repercussion of this delay, Doug? I mean, is this something we need to be moving on right away, or is this delay gonna cause any problems?
It's a factor of risk, and to wait three weeks is not. I mean, we're not in dire straits. I mean, you know, I mean, we can wait the three weeks to review this project and provide the additional information in the zones. If that answers your question, or...
So, is there any financial risk? I mean, if we don't proceed with trying to move ahead with this, are we putting anything at jeopardy?
Not to say at this point, no, not anymore than we have been. I mean, from that standpoint. I'm not trying to make this as a panic. You know, it's a panic repair. I don't wanna, I don't wanna emphasize it that way.
Okay. Well, this is my district. And me, we didn't bring it out, but this is my district. And I am very proud of Wanna Make a Corridor. I think that this city has brought in a lot of business on Wanna Maker. We've brought in a lot of sales tax. I would like to, I have asked several times for how much sales tax is paid for out of District Six or Seven and Eight. And I haven't gotten any answers, but, and I'm really ashamed that we're not. I have supported many things, that projects with Walmart. I think that maybe this is one reason we need Citizen Review Group to look at our form of government, because we need to be supporting the city, not just our districts. And that was one of the questions that came out in fulfilling each district vacancy, was are you gonna support the city, not just your district? So, I am for one, if we don't have any problem with delaying this, and you're saying it's not gonna be cost. We don't even have a fire station in District Seven. So, if the water went down and we had fires over there, I mean, what are we gonna do? So, I'm just, I'm a little bit upset that we're so against doing anything with the Wanna Make a Corridor, 'cause it brings in a lot of business to the city and a lot of tax dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And noticing on your fact sheet, I just saw a point, it says, "This report further recommends consolidation of the southern portions of the southeast pressure zone with the west pressure zone to address current water pressure inadequacies due to serving higher land elevation areas along south Topeka Boulevard." Is that something, and that's something into the future, that you're looking at connecting the different, whatever, entities across the city so that, to solve problems, one area of the city that the other might have?
This, this project, our need for it is as we've stated. But when we do this project, the size of the main will also be sized to allow for altering the pressure zones to, to improve some of the pressures on the south side. And then, that's the stepping stone that actually allows us to look at improvements on the, on some of the east side of some of the pressure.
Okay, thank you.
It's a little bit confusing to detail without sitting down with some maps, but...
Okay, thank you. Mr. Schmidt, I think, was, had something earlier, did?
Yes. Can, can you, Doug, can you tell us, or Don, how, how did you come to put this as the first proposal? Why is this a priority over any other redundancy issues? Or is it, or is it? Is this, is this the most pressing issue? Is this the issue, like, like you just explained, I believe, that we need to do this first before we can do south and then east? Is there, is there, what's the rationale behind bringing this first?
It was really looking at the risk, you know, factor, and just how many, you know, how many businesses that we would put in jeopardy, that we could close down, et cetera, from that standpoint. And that's what drove this, was, you know, basically, risk. You know, you know, you close all the hotels, you close all the restaurants, you shut down all that sales tax, and you send people on down the road from the standpoint of not utilizing, you know, if, if we had a break and lost it. And we're just, it was really race, you know, looking at it from a risk standpoint.
So, this, this is the project that, that has the most risk involved in it? And then I assume we would move on to less risky or project, prospects?
Yeah, we try to look at the consequences of the, of the loss, and also, you know, what's the, you know, likability of the loss. And we've had failures. If the pipe has lots of failures in it, it's probably gonna, you know, there's possibility of failing again, but then what are the consequences? And what are we taking down if we do lose that line?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. City Manager, you had a quick point.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just state that, that I think the idea that, to bring this back in a couple of weeks is a good one. I, I, I think that the understanding of the impact of this project vis-à-vis the entire city and the entire city water system would be educational and helpful in understanding the impacts it would have in other, in other districts also, so I just wanna jump in on that.
Mr. Campos? I'm sorry, I'm Miss Everhart.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I have supported citywide projects, and, and I don't mean to say I wouldn't support this one. I think that was some excellent questions you, you asked Councilman Schmidt, because that's helpful. But I think that's what I was asking for, and I'm glad it was a deferral as opposed to just rejecting it, because I think I need to understand what is the real plan for addressing some of the issues that have been going on for a couple of years in the city. So, and it sounds like there is a plan of how we're gonna get around to those things, and maybe this was just that I needed to hear that plan. And so, I appreciate the extra couple of weeks. Thank you.
Okay, we have a, an amendment, or a motion to defer before us, to defer this project as five D for three weeks, first Tuesday in March. Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have six yes. Ortiz, Schwartz, and Schmidt voting no.
Six having voted yes, the project budget ordinance notice is deferred until March three. We will continue then with item E, piping replacement.
E is a project budget in the amount of $900,000 and an ordinance and a notice of intention introduced by City Manager Jim Colson, authorizing improvement project number T 151016 Phase One for stormwater piping replacement at southeast 29th Street between Kansas Avenue and southeast Fremont Street, approving cost estimates of the proposed improvements, and doing all other things necessary and incidental thereto, and authorizing the use of utility operation funds, and authorizing the publication of the notice of intention of the governing body of the City of Topeka, Kansas, to issue and sell revenue bonds of said city to make such improvements, which constitutes improvements to the municipally-owned water, water pollution control, and stormwater utility system of the City of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas, pursuant to KSA 10-101 at Seek and 10-1201 at Seek. All amendments thereto, authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds to pay the costs of the project, which further constitutes a general improvement to the city's waterworks, sanitary, and/or stormwater sewage disposal system, pursuant to City of Topeka Code Section A 12-1, and authorizing the borrowing of funds from the KDHE SRF loan to pay the costs thereof. Final reading.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Whittaker?
Mr. Whittaker?
This project is Phase Two of the one that we started with last year when we purchased the land and the buildings down there. It's roughly at 29th Street just east of the railroad and Kansas Avenue. The issue here is the piping structure that goes across that property is failing, and primarily, it's not really, from what we can know, not even a piping structure. It could be an old railroad car. It could be something that's there as part of the piping system. It is failing. That's why we had to buy the buildings. It's in a flood plain. It actually runs under a building, so to get to it, we'd have to tear the building down anyways. The parking lot, my understanding is, is already sinking, and we had to do some emergency repairs a few years back, because it, when it failed, it was obviously upstream, so then it was backing water up into properties, et cetera, down in that area. So, this is Phase Two, to be able to tear the buildings down. And by owning that property, since it really is in the floodway, or excuse me, the flood plain, we would then be able to replace it with an open-channel type structure versus another pipe, which would, you know, allow us better from the standpoint of flow in that area.
Thank you. And I am, I am very familiar with this, 'cause it was my council district, and this is where it's been a major flooding issue and a, a serious problem for a number of years. And sometimes even, we've had, when it's heavy rains, we almost have to close 29th Street because of the flooding that occurs there. Mr. Campos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand the importance of this project. I would just, if I may, the businesses that were located in this area were not consulted or contacted directly. The property was owned by, by someone who was renting it out, and the city had made an agreement with that property owner to purchase that property and to go ahead and put the utility work in. But what happened was, no one spoke with the business owners. I received three calls from three of the business owners in that area. Why they called me, I don't know. But they were very upset that the city had never consulted with them. They just had to vacate their, the premises and try to find a different location to do business. Moving forward, when these type of issues come up, and we have to do utility work, and it's gonna dis, you know, displace a business, I think it would be appropriate for our, for the city to be proactive in reaching out to those businesses instead of the property owner itself. With that, move to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the project E. Is there discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the project is approved. We'll go on to F, City Park Stormwater Pump Station.
F is a project budget in the amount of $1,500,000 and an ordinance introduced, and an ordinance and a notice of intention introduced by City Manager Jim Colson, authorizing improvement project number T 501018 for Phase One of the City Park Stormwater Pump Station Rehabilitation, approving cost estimates of the proposed improvements, and doing all other things necessary and incidental thereto, and authorizing the use of utility operation funds, authorizing the publication of the notice of intention of the governing body of the City of Topeka, Kansas, to issue and sell revenue bonds of said city to make such improvements, which constitutes improvements to the municipally-owned water, water pollution control, and stormwater utility system of the City of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas, pursuant to KSA 10-101 at Seek and 10-1201 at Seek. And all amendments thereto, authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds to pay the costs of the project, which further constitutes a general improvement to the city's waterworks, sanitary, and/or stormwater sewage disposal system, pursuant to City of Topeka Code Section A 12-1, and authorizing the borrowing of funds from the KDHE SRF loan to pay the costs thereof. Final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask Mr. Whittaker to provide information on this and answer any questions.
Mr. Whittaker?
This project is related to a pump station that works with the levee system. The best way to explain this is, if you're familiar with the levees, the storm sewer systems throughout the city obviously drain to the river. And if you're familiar, there's better, called, one of the, call them the flap gates. Basically, those are always open, obviously, except if the river level was to raise up to the point that it's above that flap gate. It obviously shuts those gates so that water from the river can't, you know, the levee is still protecting us, but the water can't back up, the storm sewer system back up into the city. At that point, you've still got water coming towards the river, and this pump station is what lifts it from there and puts it over into the, you know, the other side of the levee and into the river proceeding, you know, to carry the water on, away. So, the important, that was just trying to explain the importance of what this pump station is for. You know, it is for flood protection, et cetera, for the city in that, in that area. This particular pump station is approximately 58 years old. Its equipment is getting tired and old. And what this would be is, we would look at initially to upgrade some of the electrical systems and control systems for the pumps, and then also, at the same time, look at what, you know, the design would be as far as replacing some of those pumps going forward. And so, again, it's primarily, you know, flood control and works with our levee system. And I just wanted to emphasize the importance of the structure and the reason that we need the facility.
Thank you.
And I can answer any questions.
Are there questions for Mr. Whittaker? Ms. Ortiz? Yes, Mrs. Ortiz moves to approve. Mrs. Everhart, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes. Mr. Campos?
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes. Project F, item is approved. Go to item G, wastewater main lining and replacement.
G is a project budget in the amount of $1 million and ordinance and a notice of intention introduced by City Manager Jim Colson, authorizing improvement project number T 291028 for 2014 wastewater main lining and replacement program, approving cost estimates of the proposed improvements, and doing all of the things necessary and incidental thereto, and authorizing the use of utility operation funds, authorizing the publication of the notice of intention of the governing body of the City of Topeka, Kansas, to issue and sell revenue bonds of the said city to make such improvements, which constitutes improvements to the municipally-owned water, water pollution control, and stormwater utility system of the City of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas, pursuant to KSA 10-101 at Seek and 10-1201 at Seek. And all amendments thereto, authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds to pay the costs of the project, which further constitutes a general improvement to the city's waterworks, sanitary, and/or stormwater sewage disposal system, pursuant to City of Topeka Code Section A 12-1, and authorizing the borrowing of funds from the KDHE SRF loan to pay the costs thereof. Final reading.
Your City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Whittaker?
This project is, there are 880 miles of sewer line within the city. And this project here is, is to clean and repair lines, you know, multiple lines of the gravity sewer mains. Within that, there's two maps that kinda outline some areas that we feel that are identified, that are in poor shape. And this is based on the, we have cleaning crews that go out. They can identify through the cleaning process where those bad lines are, et cetera. This activity is, is to actually clean them, inspect them, and then again, line, for the most part, we would hope that we could do the lining of the sewer line, which primarily helps with root intrusion is probably one of the biggest issues for backups, et cetera. So, again, we're trying to reuse the line that's there and actually line it versus having to replace it. Cost-wise, just to give you, it's like $50 a foot to line it. It's $350 a foot to start all over with another new line. So, obviously, it's much more to our advantage if we can try to reuse the line and, and, and reline it. And this would also seal the inside of the manholes to also preserve those.
Thank you. Would you describe generally the areas of the city? I know, I, we have the maps in front of us, but some of those, it's hard to, to figure out exactly what area of the city it is, because the streets are, we, you need a Meg Bank of Fine Glass to figure out the streets.
Adams and 37th on the second page, and... Twilight and 33rd Terrace.
Okay, on the second page, it's really the Lykan's Foster area. I'm sorry, High Crest area.
Yeah.
Okay.
These would be older, older areas.
And the other area is primarily, the first map is...
That was the Twilight and...
That's, yeah, that's Force, I-470, and then it's the area just north and, and...
East of 470.
North and east of I-470. Okay.
Those areas.
All right. Questions? Ms. Ortiz?
Well, I'll make a motion approved, because I thought my house was in there somewhere, 'cause that's the issue I have in our area, so, but I, I can sympathize, so I'll go ahead and make a motion approved.
It's been moved. Mr. Campos, seconds. And I also, and I noticed, this is another one that's a requirement of the Kansas Department of Health and Environment and the EPA, and also, it looks like we could use funding from the Kansas Department of Health and Environment Revolving Fund, so it will, will not reflect back on us directly. It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I'm sorry. There's a question. Mr. Campos?
Forgive me, I just had a quick question. What is the life expectancy on lining it, rather than completely replacing it?
I think, do we have 50 years? It's, it's actually, when that gets in there and sets, it's just like another concrete line. So, I mean, we're not just fixing it with a Band-Aid. This is a good permanent fix.
That's exactly what I wanna hear.
To save those lines.
All right, thank you, Mr. Whittaker. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the project is approved. We go to five H.
H is a project budget in the amount of $2 million and ordinance and a notice of intention introduced by City Manager Jim Colson, authorizing improvement project number T 281076 for 2014 Water Main Replacement Program, approving cost estimates of the proposed improvements, and doing all of the things necessary and incidental thereto, and authorizing the use of utility operation funds, authorizing the publication of the notice of intention of the governing body of the City of Topeka, Kansas, to issue and sell revenue bonds of said city to make such improvement, which constitutes improvements to the municipally-owned water, water pollution control, and stormwater utility system of the City of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas, pursuant to KSA 10-101 and 10-1201 at Seek, and all amendments thereto, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds to pay the costs of the project, which further constitutes a general improvement to the city's waterworks, sanitary, and/or stormwater sewage disposal system, pursuant to City of Topeka Code Section A 12-1, and authorizing the borrowing of funds from the KDHE SRF loan to pay the costs thereof. Final reading.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Whittaker?
This project is related to water line replacement. And this would, we generally, each year, try to designate $2 million towards water main replacements throughout the city. The, the primary, when I say the primary priority is, is to tie in again with half-cent sales tax, street construction projects, that if we're doing one of those major, you know, a half-cent rebuild of the street with a half-cent sales tax, that we look at those water lines and make sure that we repair those under the brand-new street versus just covering over what's already there. But that, and then we have some areas here in this map that's just laid out, you know, of areas that we know we've got some primary concerns.
So, actually, the map, there may be others that you replace, other than those that are on this map. I think that's a very important point, correct?
These are some key areas, yes, there. And then we try to work with also the half-cent sales tax construction project to make sure, again, that we're not, you know, putting a brand-new road over an old water line.
All right, thank you. Other questions? Mrs. Ortiz has moved to approve. Mr. Campos, seconds. Is there discussion? Mr. Man Speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, the way this is structured, we don't have any plans for how we're gonna replace water mains if we pass this, this budget. Is it just a, what, what, first come, first served, or how?
We probably, we key on, you know, if we're, where the half-cent sales tax projects are our key priority, and then we would work, then again, we would go through a risk, you know, through the risk area of, you know, which ones are the more risky lines. Again, what's the consequences of, you know, what are we gonna lose, you know, in that area? And then also, you know, if, if the line has had several breaks in it, we know, obviously, it's probably gonna break again. So, we would try to, we would prioritize them that way.
So, a potential example of that might be 15th Street from McVicker to Washburn, where there's been five, six breaks in the last two years. And I now have two different streets, I believe Boswell, not Boswell, Jewel and Plast that are closed at 15th Street, because the water main was replaced, but then the snow hit, and now they have empty holes in their ground. And, and the reason I bring it up is that we're repeatedly having issues in some of the same places. And so, I, as somebody who pushed to pair this with the road maintenance projects, I think that that's valuable and important, but the, the overall plan, I think, is still lacking in that we have repeated problems in the same places over and over. And I know there is no plan to replace 15th Street, as far as I know, in the upcoming half-cent sales tax money. So, from my perspective, how do we pair with our, our projects that we're planning on doing so that we're not cutting into the street twice, but at the same time, understand that there are places that still need to be replaced that may not be paired to a project? And some of the concerns that I've heard was that when college was red, or when 17th Street was redone, some of that construction work may have caused the breaks on 15th Street. And so, it's a residual effect of the work that's being done, but that's not planned into the process. I mean, that's not, if we're gonna do a street, we're gonna plan to replace water mains on, you know, 200 yards on each side of it. That's not what's actually happening. Nor, nor do I suggest that it needs to be. But when you have so many breaks in such a small stretch of pipe, I have to imagine that it's on its last leg. Thank you.
Do you wanna respond?
Basically, let me say, going forward, I mean, this was what we normally do and was in the 2014 CIP that, you know, was approved a year ago. Going forward, we're trying to, we're working a plan right now to come back with a more, you know, laid-out, you know, area for water main breaks, where we should be replacing the lines. And also, how do we pay for this? We're trying to get into, we've gotta get a better plan of going forward is, how do we get into a, a good maintenance plan on our water lines and like that? And that is what we are working on right now.
Sure.
When can we expect a plan like that?
We've gotta come back. I'm, we're working on it right now with also looking at, you know, where we go, you know, with, with rates. And also, we'd have to come back at the 2015, you know, CIP to 19, and we're supposed to come back to that within a couple of months here. So, we would, we would come back with some sort of a plan at that time and how we plan to go forward.
Thank you.
So, what we're doing here is, by approving this budget, we're providing $2 million to, that we need to start in on, in 2014, as soon as possible, in some areas, and looking into 2015, and maybe addressing some serious areas that need to be fixed also. In addition to, we're moving them up sooner, or something like that. Is that right?
Yes, this, this money is just for what we normally, we usually approve, or designate $2 million each year, is my understanding in the past. Going forward, we need to, we know that it needs to be ramped up more than that, to be very honest with you.
Mr. Campos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with you, Mr. Whittaker. We do need a plan, and I do agree with Councilman Man Speaker. If I reckon correctly, our, our utility debt, as of right now, is hovering a little under $300 million. If, if I reckon correctly, it's the last, Jeff, do you know a figure by chance?
Keep, keep talking, and I'll get there for you, yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Harmon had mentioned that the 2002 distribution plan that we had, would, would it be suggested that we revise that, including the water main breaks in that?
Yes, I would take a look at that. I'd have to, you know, go back and get some more information on that. But yes, that would be, you know, one of the items we would look at.
Okay. I'll stop if I have to, Mr. Mayor.
Other questions? Mrs. Hiller?
I'm looking at your map, and, and I do recognize that it seems like almost everything on the map, with the exception of what appears to be Chesney Park Neighborhood Association, is, is a half-cent sales tax project for next year. Do you have a dollar figure for what you expect this, what you've already got marked, to cost? For that $2 million?
Yeah, actually, with the half-cent sales tax projects, if we had to replace all of the water mains associated with the half-cent sales tax street projects, $2 million here would not cover it. We have not finished identifying all of the water mains with the half-cent sales tax that need to be replaced, associated with that. But it, it basically, we, we will have to make some choices within that. So, this $2 million, we'll be stretching the money to replace the water mains associated with half-cent sales tax. So, in a stretch of road where they replace, let's say, half of it may have, the water main may be under the street. The other half may be outside. We'd like to replace the one outside, but we would choose not to. We'll replace only the section underneath the street in order to stretch our dollars. If, was I clear on that, or?
I think so. I, you know, what I was looking for in general was whether you... I, you know, what I was looking for in general was whether you thought it was going to total a million, and you had a million left over for 15th Street or other projects, or whether you just, how much was you expected?
Just associated with the half-cent sales tax, we would probably, if we were going to actually replace all of the water mains that were, you know, fairly aged, it would probably cost more than two.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a motion, do, do we have a motion to approve? We do, okay. Is there other discussion?
Oh, I'll get your answer.
Mr. Mayor, I do, I have an answer to Mr. Campos's question.
You'll have to be quick.
It's very quick. Two, two numbers for you. Total outstanding utility revenue bonds, as of the, the end of the year, $123,790,000. Total KDHE revolving loans, state revolving loans, $65 million. Call it 65.1 million. So, a total of $189 million.
Okay, other discussion? All those in favor of the, of the motion to approve project H, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the project budget is approved. This completes this section. And I, and I, and Councilmembers, I think it is important that we did it a different way this year with the CIP. And I hope that it worked, I think it worked, it worked well. It is a bit overwhelming to do all of these in one night, but there's also some advantage. Certainly, I see, too, seeing the big picture. We will have to, we change a tape. We've been here that length of time, so we will have a minimum of a five-minute recess.